All right, welcome everyone. Today is Tuesday, uh, sorry, it's not September. December 14th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of a judgment for the city of Asbury Park. Mr. Abaloni, please call us to order.
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. For your information, the fire exits are located on the east to west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. If everyone could turn off their cell phones for the duration of this meeting, I would appreciate it. And this meeting is currently being recorded by AP-TV. Please call us to order, Irina.
Thank you. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Catherine Minarvini is unfortunately absent, and tonight is her last meeting with us. Bonnie Knopf is also absent. Russell Lewis is also absent this evening. And finally, Christopher Abaloni.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so we have some housekeeping issues. The first, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the zoning board meeting of November 9th, 2021.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Christopher Abaloni and a second by Daniel Harris. And everyone present is eligible to vote, except Brittany Ashman and Jill Potter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, minutes approved.
And I will make a motion to approve the resolution of 1117 Sunset Avenue. Mr. Bowbill, application.
Wendy, you were here. So I have a motion by Christopher Abaloni and a second by Wendy Glassman. And let me just take role and, sorry, I have to open it up. Just one sec. Actually, I think everyone here, except for Jill, is eligible.
Britt, did you have your hand here?
Oh, Brittany wasn't here. Okay, thank you. Thank you, okay. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
And Christopher Abaloni?
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution for 1117 Sunset Avenue is memorialized.
Thank you, Irina. All right, so if anyone's here for the application of 507 Sewell Avenue, it will not be heard tonight. It's going to be carried to January 11th, 2022.
With new notice.
With new notice.
Correct.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Sure, why not?
Okay, I'll make a motion to carry the 507 Sewell Avenue application to January 11th, 2022 with new notice.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Christopher Abaloni and a second by Daniel Harris. Uh, we can just take it.
Sure we can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Application carried to January 11th, 2022 with new notice.
All right, so the first application is 904 Heck Street, then appeal. Please come up.
Uh, who do you want up first?
Well, doesn't matter, maybe the applicants can come up first. Whichever makes it more efficient, it's fine.
Okay, first, we have to let everyone know that...
Why don't I have Ms. Alonso come up first, so she can...
Jill Potter has to recuse herself, so she's going to...
Yes.
Jill Potter's gonna step down, she has a potential conflict. Um, Mr. Chairman, we can handle this. Either have the city come up and give you the basis for their decision, or we can have the applicants come up and tell us why they're appealing and the basis for their appeal.
I think the better way to start is with the city to provide their explanation of why this application, why this permit was provided.
Let's go. Yeah, I swear to you. Okay, Mr. Alonso, please raise your right hand. So I swear, testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it, and give us your affiliation with the city of Asbury Park.
Michelle Alonso, licensed professional planner, and I am the Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the city of Asbury Park. And I'm here because I am, or was, the previous zoning officer supervisor. He's no longer employed with the city.
So then, do you in fact be the individual who would be responsible for this matter and have the knowledge?
Yes, I am.
And you're authorized by city ordinances to be testifying this evening?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Let's also have Donna Miller testify. Please raise your hand, so I'm sure testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please give us your name and your affiliation, please.
Donna, official planner, deputy against, board planner.
Thank you.
Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Okay, so, um, as I had stayed being sworn in, well, background is, this is an appeal by residents in the city of 904 Heck Street, appealing a zoning permit. Permit number 17853, authorized by then zoning officer Mark Siegel, of whom I was his supervisor.
Do you have a copy that we can use?
Yes.
I have one, and I have five. So that's gonna be C1, is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like the whole packet marked as an exhibit.
How many pages does it consist of?
Only four papers.
Five. It's six, with the front and back.
So why don't we use the six-pack, as it were?
Yes.
And have it one, identification, please. That'll be C1.
Yes.
And that's the zoning permit with the attached documents.
Okay, thank you. So the first page of the exhibit is the actual zoning permit that is being appealed. The issue date is 4/27/21, but as the board may know, an appeal can be filed upon the date of discovery of the permit. And so this appeal was filed in the month of September after the applicant discovered the nature of the permit in August.
So the appeal is timely.
Yes, the appeal is timely.
That's fine. By the way, Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the notices that were submitted in connection with this, they were in proper form.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Please proceed, Ms. Alonso.
So the permit that was applied for and was granted was to place a rooftop condenser on the residence of 904 Heck Street in the R1 district. And the Mark Siegel said, "The applicant has been approved for the installation of a roof platform for the purposes of placing HVAC condensers as shown on the plan. Submit marked A1 of 4/27/21. The condenser shall be screened with a lattice shown on the aforementioned plan." So Mark approved this, this is compliant with the zoning ordinance. And the reason that this is a little unusual, I'm sure you may be asking, why on the roof? If you turn to the aerial photo that I have of the property, 904 Heck Street...
It's part of C1.
Part of C1. This is a one-family structure, but based on its position and its architecture, this was probably at some time an accessory structure to own the houses.
Like a carriage house?
Yes. And thus, this property has no side yards and no rear yard, and that it is all front yard. Our zoning ordinance, if you turn to page... Three of your handout, accessory structures are not permitted in a front yard area. Chapter 30-75.1, accessory structures in all zones. Accessory structures not attached to a principal structure may be erected in a side or rear yard in accordance with the following regulations. Well, this property does not have side and rear yard for an AC condenser. AC condenser is an accessory structure because it lives as accessory to a principal use. No one has an air conditioning condenser as their primary use, it's accessory. So that's the regulations fall under accessory uses and structure. So what is the solution that the homeowner has? Not permitted in the front yard, no side yard, no rear yard, put it on the roof. So, the next page, height regulations, under 30-68.3. A, general application. No building or structure shall have a greater number of stories or greater height than permitted in the zone where such building or structure is located. This building is well in compliance with the height requirement of the R1 district. Two, mechanical appendices such as condensers, elevator penthouses, et cetera, but condensers do not extend more than 12 feet above the maximum height limitations, cover no more than 20% of the roof area, and properly shielded by a parapet wall. So this condenser, this building does, is, with the condenser, does not exceed more than 12 feet above the maximum height, in fact, is below the permitted height, covers no more than 20% of the roof area, and then is properly shielded by a parapet wall. Because this roof does not have a parapet wall, Mr. Siegel required screening of the condenser in lieu of the architectural feature that would screen a parapet wall. And this is the basis he used to grant this permit. But what I do need to add is that he probably did not have to reference this exception to height regulations because even with having this condenser on top of the roof, this does not exceed the height regulation of the R1 zone, and thus, it is permitted to be on the roof. And that is my explanation in place of Mark Siegel, zoning officer, of why this permit was granted and why this permit complies with the zoning regulations and is a valid permit.
Has the structure itself that's on the roof been camouflaged in any way, Michelle, from view?
The permit requires that it be screened, but I also want to note, this air conditioning condenser is not visible from the front yard and it's not visible from the side yard. The only place that is visible is if you're standing in a neighboring property's rear yard. Is not visible from any sidewalk or street.
So you can't see it from the front of the house?
You can't see it from the front of the house, and you can't even see it from around the corner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any further questions on Michelle?
I have one. So clarify for me why this is permitted to be there within the zone?
Because...
Which section of the law?
The R1 section, which, with the height requirement. This is below the height requirement of the R1 zone for a single-family home.
And how about that you're permitted to put in this accessory use structure on the roof within the zone?
Yes, you are.
And that's according to what, the R1 requirements, or some other section?
Well, it's the R1 requirements, but Mr. Siegel relied on the section for condensers and required the screening as such. It's, so it's both. It is both, but the bottom line is, it is under, like a chimney, like it is on the roof and it is, falls under the maximum height requirement of the R1 zone.
Thank you.
So I do have a further question. So when you say it has to be screened, what exactly does that entail when you say screened?
Well, if you look in, um... Well, this is the sideline, but if you look on page two, and in the little squiggly bubble, it says, "Platform guardrail with lattice or slatted fence visual screen attached to guardrail." That was a requirement of this permit by Mr. Siegel.
Okay.
And it also has a sideline drawing, but more importantly, he required the condensers to have a screening around it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Donna, do you have any questions of Ms. Alonso?
No, I just, for the board certification, I was working in the zoning office during the interim period where Mr. Siegel had left and had hired a zoning officer. And I am familiar with the application when they first was raised. So as far as procedurally, if anybody has questions about what happened, I have information there. I agree with Ms. Alonso's assessment, to the point that, yeah, I think Mr. Siegel went a little above and beyond to require the screening. There's nothing in the ordinance, in my opinion, that actually requires that the section that we're talking about relates to exemptions from calculation of the building height. So, you know, it's helpful, but it's not specifically required, both because the building is not exceeding the building height and the thing on the roof is not exceeding the building height.
Thank you, I understand. So, shall we open it up?
Open it to cross-examination, should I, from the public?
Does anybody in the public like to question Ms. Alonso?
My name is James Canely, I'm the attorney for the property owner who, so, parapet is being appealed. I have no questions for Ms. Alonso.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, could you spell your name? Thank you.
Anyone else in the public, for any questions for Ms. Alonso regarding her testimony?
I actually do have one question.
Sure.
I'm Joshua Gomes.
Come right up, sure, I'll give you the microphone. Please identify yourself.
Ah, yes, that's Joshua Gomes, I'm the owner of 906 Heck Street.
Okay.
So I just had a question regarding the previous state of the home. So previously, the air conditioning unit was in the front yard, but you stated it's not allowed per the zoning. How was that allowed previously?
I don't believe it was installed correctly, meaning I don't, it did not receive approvals from our office.
Okay, so it was installed unlawfully, is what you're saying?
I believe, to the extent of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, and then the second question I had was in regards to what you were describing, I 100% agree with you that it is a interesting property, so obviously there's interpretation required. The zoning code that you were referencing, saying that the condensers would be located in a side or backyard, it didn't actually have clarity regarding if the property did not have a side or backyard, correct?
That's correct, because most structures in the city have a side and backyard, but instances where there may not be, such as a commercial district, you tend to find them on a roof.
Right. And given that the air conditioning was previously in the front yard, where it could also be installed, reinstalled, do you think that a variance would have been granted since this house?
I cannot answer that.
That's a wrong, you can't ask her that question. Only they can.
But I do, I do have to state that there is not, for a zoning board, there is not precedent. In other words, each case has to stand on its own merit.
Sure. Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Anyone else in the public for Ms. Alonso's testimony? Thank you, Ms. Alonso.
Thank you.
Now, for the city's case, if the applicants want to come forward and testify, they can. Yeah, now, I know all of you have joined in the appeal, or a number of folks now.
Yes.
So, uh... We'll allow both of you to be sworn in and talk, but if it gets confusing, I'll go to the traditional way of one witness at a time.
Yeah, that's fine, I think, we intend to do it one at a time to avoid any confusion. Okay?
So would you please raise your right hands, solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter with the truth, excuse me, full truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your names and spell them and your addresses, so you can proclaim your standing.
Okay. Joshua Gomes, J-O-S-H-U-A-G-O-M-E-S, 906 Heck Street.
I am Michelle Dunn, M-I-C-H-E-L-E-D-U-N-N, reside at 908 Heck Street.
Who would like to go first?
I'll start, actually. So just to reiterate, this is an appeal that is actually multiple homes that now are in view of the unit on top of the roof. I think, as Ms. Alonso kind of illustrated, the goal is, you know, for the zoning ordinance seems to be to keep the beauty of the neighborhood, keep these off the front yards of homes, which we completely understand. However, as also we've all realized, this home is not the typical Asbury Park home, which is, you know, something to consider as we assess what the visual impact is. Because now, the goal to not cause eyesores at the street level has been moved to the backyards of everyone on the appeal, including about 10 homes that are now in view of this versus in the front yard, where most people have a few front porches, but there's a greater number of houses that are now affected by this than would be in the front yard. Also noted that it was previously installed there, that a lot of people weren't even aware of, because it was shielded by a bush and no one knew about it. So, to reiterate, we're kind of all on this appeal, because we have these concerns about, obviously, the visual impact, and you said the precedent that is set for all of Asbury Park. I don't know if we actually have any images that are actually what it looks like versus the drawings, because I do think that it is very different. I don't know if you have those in your...
Any of your application materials, which do you want me to...
Any one of the photos that's included would be very indicative of what we're all looking at.
So if I understand correctly, though, you can only see this from your backyard, is that correct, Mr. Gomes?
And my back window, bedroom windows, and the three decks on the rear of my home. So it's not necessarily just whilst I'm in the backyard, it's also while I'm in my home as well. And that is true for the other people on the appeal as well. So you have to remember that way that this house is set is set all the way back to the rear of the property, where most of the houses are set all the way forward, almost.
As a carriage house, that would be set all the way back.
Absolutely, yeah, I just want to make sure you have that.
Because it used to be a garage.
Correct, exactly. So as you can see, thank you for pulling up the pictures. It's quite, quite large, and I think the other thing in relation to how large the condensers actually are, it is a bit disproportionate. We understand that perhaps that is to aid in the servicing of the units, but as we were talking, you know, about chimneys, I would say it's significantly larger than a chimney that would be accompanying this house as well. The other thing, concerns that we have is that because it does extend above the roofline and it is unprecedented, we are by the ocean, and lest we forget that there are hurricanes and other winds, we're also concerned about safety issues that may be not well understood because of its unprecedented.
It's not been established that it's unprecedented.
I think that we, it was not stated by me that it was unprecedented, but...
There may be other locations, similar things throughout the city, but we don't know that yet.
Okay, fair. Also noting that the zoning code requiring a parapet wall, and this is only requiring a screen, which are not, am I incorrect?
Where in the zoning, if you're gonna say the zoning ordinance requires a parapet wall, what section of the zoning ordinance requires that?
I don't have it in front of me, so we can, I guess, not talk about that, unless we have it here.
This is the section.
I know there's a section within the commercial district that requires...
One, right?
No?
Yes, this is it. We have the section here.
Are exempt from height.
What is the section?
So it is section 30-68.3B2, where it states, um... One second. I'm sorry, can you say the citation again? 30... 30-68.3, section B, number two. The city's code provides for such installations to be exempt from height restriction only where the units are properly shielded by a parapet wall.
It's been established that this doesn't require, this doesn't violate the height restrictions.
So let's read that section into the records, so that we all know what it actually says. So 68... So it's entitled, "Pipe Regulations." And...
I have it up on the screen, Donna.
So A is the general application. A building or structure shall have a greater number of stories or greater height than permitted in the zone where that building or structure is located. B, exceptions. Number one, height limitations that are stipulated elsewhere in this chapter shall not apply when attached to a principal structure, such as spires, bellies, cupolas, domes, monuments, et cetera. Restating structures that are not principal buildings shall be considered accessory structures and shall meet the height requirements set in Schedule 1. So we're not talking about a bell-free, hoopla, dome, monument, so it does apply. Number two...
Also, the first paragraph, you read number four. Could you slide, move that down? Okay. What does the first section say? I'm sorry.
The general application of the rule.
Right, and what does it say?
No building shall have a greater number of stories or greater height than permitted.
So, we do not have...
We're not talking about the height of the...
...greater height or greater stories.
Correct. Okay, understood. So specifically, the citation you're talking about is B2, and B, I'm sorry, did you say 3? 68.3. Yeah, so B2 is, "Mechanical appendices such as condensers, elevator penthouses, exhaust fans, air conditioning equipment, and other similar equipment are exempt from the height restrictions, provided they do not extend more than 12 feet above the maximum height limitation, cover no more than 20% of the roof area, and are properly shielded by a parapet wall." So 2 talks about how mechanical equipment, not just air conditioning condensers, but other things like elevator penthouses, don't count toward the building height if they're small and don't take up a lot of floor area.
I think, go ahead.
Okay, and then the third corollary is, if they're properly shielded. Again, we're talking about something?
I thought you were done.
I was gonna sum up, but, yeah, this section applies to things that are allowed to exceed the maximum building height, and the way that they're allowed to exceed the maximum height.
And this does not.
Again, what we're talking about as part of the appeal is a thing that's not affecting the building height.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
In summary, for me, something that was not previously an issue in the neighborhood impacting anyone visually has now impacted many people. I think we can all agree that this, like, this house is not a typical house on the street, and that is why we're bringing this to everyone's attention, because we think this was, has an overall greater negative effect on the neighborhood and the city of Asbury Park.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Gomes?
Mr. Gomes, in your application, you talked about noise.
Correct.
clusion, have you had a study done on that?
I do not believe it has been connected yet, the air conditioning units. We're unable to actually fully understand this, as the construction is not complete.
Okay, have you gone on, listened to all the outside air conditioning, condensers?
I'm aware of how loud they are, yes, and we, what we don't understand is the acoustic effect of it being on a slanted roof directed at other homes in close proximity.
Anyone else for Mr. Gomes?
Did you, what was your experience with the sound level when it was in the front of the house?
Like I said, most of us were unaware it was even there, so it was also landscaped as other houses on the street have them in their side yard to shield them from view. Also, being close to the ground with less reverberation from solid structures helps reduce noise.
Donna, do you have any questions for Mr. Gomes? Does anybody in the public have any questions for Mr. Gomes?
Thank you. Can I get something more for identification?
Sure. Make it HO1, homeowner one?
HO?
For homeowner. That's the subject property owner.
And this is what you said, am I right, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna put it up on the screen. We're just gonna mark both pages as one exhibit.
Yeah, HO for homeowner. Usually you would say applicant, but he's not the applicant, so it's a little confusing.
Is this part of our packet? Irina?
No, it was just for safety today.
Oh.
So you know what, let me do this, I'll pass this around until I can get it up on the screen.
You also should show the witnesses as well.
Oh, yes.
Are these pictures of the condensers on my home?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we can talk about that. So also, I've recently had air conditioning installed in my home as part of some renovations earlier this year.
You should let the attorney question you.
Oh, sure.
You're commenting, so let the attorney...
Your address is 906 Heck Avenue?
Correct.
Next door to my fine?
Indeed.
You're objecting to the condensers that he wants to put on his rooftop, is that correct?
Correct.
You have multiple condensers on your rooftop, is that correct?
That is incorrect.
Three of them?
They are... They are mounted to the side of the home.
Let's watch.
Please.
Are they on the roof as well?
So they are on the side of the third story of the home. The roofline does extend below them slightly, but they are not mounted on top of the roof on a platform as they are at nine oh four Hex Street.
So you're objecting to something that you yourself have--
I don't think it's the same as there's-- we're talking about the visual impact here. And as you can see, we strategically placed them for-- there's no appeal on mine for a visual impact today.
Okay.
While we're doing this, may I ask a couple of questions to your minds?
Not at all.
So legally, the legal basis for your objecting to the permit being issued--
Yes.
Part of the visual impact?
No, also, mine do not extend above the roofline.
I'm not talking about yours, I'm talking about the--
Why, why I'm appealing is because those who do it--
I need to know the legal basis for the appeal.
Right.
What section of the ordinance are you claiming, other than that one, that the zoning officer violated when he issued the permit?
I think--
Noise ordinance.
Sorry?
Noise ordinance. We're also appealing on the basis of a noise ordinance.
We don't know the noise yet.
The-- I'm sorry, I apologize if you're correct on that one, but it's also the city of Asbury Park's nuisance ordinance. They are visual nuisance and they are impeding on the well-being of the residents.
No, no, not--
It's written in this, in the city of Asbury Park's code.
But this is the zoning board, we enforce the zoning laws. That doesn't mean, that's conclusory in nature, that you're saying it's a visual nuisance. That's not part of the zoning ordinance. You're claiming the zoning officer made an error. Where in the zoning ordinance did he make the error? And so far, the section you've quoted doesn't apply to this. This is not a height or use, an excessive height situation or excessive story situation. So unless you can point out within the zoning ordinance where the zoning officer made an error, the zoning officer's actions will stand.
Understood. I think our appeal to you today was to understanding that this is not a typical property and not a typical installation within Asbury Park.
Nothing to do with the zoning ordinance.
I understand, but I think it is-- would you agree that it's the intent of zoning to make, to alleviate and define--
The intent of zoning is to ultimately ensure the orderly and adequate development of land within the jurisdiction.
And the zoning board upholds those ordinances.
And if the zoning, if the zoning ordinance permits the zoning officer to do that, it's a given that that's the intent of the ordinances. If you have a nuisance complaint at some point in the future due to excessive noise, the city of Asbury Park in fact does have noise ordinances. Those are enforced through the police powers, not through the zoning ordinance. There's no such thing as a visual because visual, in this case, unless there were specific standards, like historical standards, that are exact, it would be too subjective. The zoning board cannot enforce subjective criteria, it can only enforce objective criteria, which is things that state facts. Because if you come in here one day and you object to one, the same thing, another person can come in the other day and board and say yes in one case and no in the other, we don't want that, obviously. We want the objective criteria. So you have to point out in your appeal where the zoning officer made an error within the zoning ordinance--
Understood.
By issuing the permit.
Understood.
And so far, you know, there's nothing there.
I do want to point out one thing. I'm remembering something that Ms. Alonso stated when she was testifying, that there, this industrial platform was not visible from the front of the house or from around the corner, but it is visual from around the corner.
Even so--
Okay.
Even if that's the case, it's still, it's just a visual. It's not, it's not in violation of any section of the zoning ordinances.
So why then is it important for the city to have the unit not be visual from the front of the house?
In the front, no, it's not that. It's the, it cannot be located in a front yard.
I thought I had just read something about, because many of our other neighbors have it in the front yard or the side yard, and it's concealed and no one can see it.
Someone, your other neighbors, they're not the subject of this application. Number two, the zone, the fact that there may be condensers in the front yard, they could be pre-existing before the ordinance changed that didn't allow it, or they may be there illegally.
But that's irrelevant to this.
It's not. It's, which is an entirely different matter from what you're here for.
I'm sure Ms. Alonso would like to know who's got a condenser in their front yard if it's happened, you know, without a permit. I just took a cruise down the street view, Hex Street, I don't see a single one.
However, it's irrelevant and there's no reason for you to be here. There's no reason to drag your neighbors into this. We'll talk about the subject property and its effect on you and whether or not you have the basis for reversal of the permit.
Yeah, I mean, from what you've stated, it doesn't seem that way if it's going to be black and white as reflected in the law, but I assure you, if you were in our position, you would probably be doing the same thing.
I'm not saying that you shouldn't have come here.
Sure.
I'm just telling you that the board has to apply the law as written.
I understand.
And if it's clear, it's clear. It's not a subjective thing because that wouldn't be fair to anybody. And other, it's an irrelevant situation, irrelevant issue, but looking at yours, if somebody looking at yours may figure that that's not a good visual, but that's still irrelevant to why you're here. And I get where the attorney's coming from, but the most important element is, is did the zoning officer make a mistake? Did he mistakenly apply the law?
Yes.
Or did he not apply the laws that should have been applied in terms of zoning? And that's what you would have to establish as the appellant's.
Shall we give Ms. Donna the chance, too?
If you want to say, I'm not cutting, you have the right to continue if you have more information.
No, I don't actually have any specific codes, apparently, that are going to find fault in the zoning officer's decision, but it feels very negligent to have allowed it. And if you, okay, if you could see, if you could be in our space, you would understand why we are appealing this. Unfortunately, I don't have anything in front of me that proves that he did not follow the law, but it feels like a violation.
We appreciate your positions, but unfortunately, we have to follow the ordinance and that's the only way we can look at the law.
I mean, it's also really opening up other residents to take--
Again, each--
--take their HVAC units and put it up on--
Each application is on its own merit, Donna.
--industrial platform--
We're not talking about other people.
--in a residential neighborhood.
We're not talking about other people, just your appeal.
And even so, if it's permitted under the law, then they may very well do that.
Yes. Shouldn't be allowed under the law.
Well, then, the answer to that is you lobby the mayor and council to rewrite the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
It's a legislative action, it's not a judicial action like this board. We have to apply the law as it's written. The law comes down from mayor and council that says, no, in a residential zone, this sort of thing can't happen going forward, then it can't happen.
Very unfortunate.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Do you want to continue with your comments? Any other members in the public want to--
Does anybody in the public want to make any comments or have any further statements to make?
I guess you're excused.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments I'd like to put on the record.
Anyone else coming forward in the appellant's that filed the action? Yeah? Okay, they're being, go right ahead.
Thank you. As the court, or as the board appears to have observed, no violation of the zoning ordinance has been identified by the appellant's in this matter, and in that case, the board is required to uphold the permit that was issued. There are two procedural things that I'd like to bring to the board's attention. Ms. Dunn's appeal says that she realized what was going on on August 31st. She didn't file the appeal until September 21st, 21 days later. The statute requires that it be filed within 20 days, and she knew within 20 days. Therefore, that appeal is not timely and should not be heard. I'm not, I didn't bring this up originally because I wanted the board to hear the substance of the matter. I just want to put this on the record in case this goes to Superior Court.
Okay.
The other appeals were filed a week or two ago and are not even close to being timely and should not have been heard. Finally, you required the applicants to get a 200-foot list for my client's property. When you get a 200-foot list, the subject property is not on the list. My client didn't get notice of tonight's hearing.
I know that.
And I wanted this to go forward, so I didn't raise it originally, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention so that if somebody appeals one of these in the future for somebody else's property, that property owner should get notice. My client was in touch with the zoning board and the zoning secretary told him about the appeal. That's how he knew what was going on. That's all I have. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you.
I would like to say something.
I don't know, Jack.
Yes, you can have a brief closing argument.
Sure. Please stand up. Please come up.
You're still under oath.
I was within 20 days of putting in the appeal because it was identified to us on September 1st, the situation, and then on the 21st, I put in my appeal. So I was within 20 days of the appeal. Additionally, the other applicants were added within the 10, within the timeframe of which the zoning office indicated to us. So that was also following the law, the rules. The fact that the 200 feet of the property that he did not get a notice, it's in, within 200 feet of the property, not of the property, so I may have misunderstood that.
It's okay.
So--
The end result is, is that the appeals were pursued. Try and put it on the record only in case there's an appeal. I understand exactly what happened here. We get in fact here, the applicant is in fact, the property owner is in fact here with the council. So I get it, we're, it's okay. We can't unring the bell, whether you admit the 20 or 21 days, as a matter of fact, we'll figure that out.
Yes.
If there were an appeal going to the Superior Court after this by someone.
Okay. I have a question. And I'm trying to find the email. I didn't even just know it. Okay, so this is on September 1st. So during the week of-- Yeah, August 30th, the initial issue was raised. And I want to say it was on, yeah, it was on the 31st, so I have an email pertaining to an inquiry about the property starting on August 31st.
So--
But then we received an email back from you because I believe Ms. Alonso was on vacation and the email was addressed to her, and then first, we received a response from, from you. I have all the emails as well.
So I just wanted to make sure I had.
Yes.
I knew it was late August, because it was meeting everybody who was, was out of the office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. So should we open up for comment at this point, Jack, or are we done?
It's not an application for development, you don't technically have to.
Okay.
But if you want to, you can. Everybody that's here has already spoken.
Okay.
Unless somebody on the right side in the back wants to come up and make a public comment about the case, whether or not they want to, that's fine, but other than that, I think the four individuals sitting to the left are the appellant's and they've already spoken. And the gentleman that owns the property has spoken towards the term. So, you know, you could open it, I don't see that anybody's going to come up.
I'll do it as--
Sure.
--a favor to the appellant's. Does anybody else want to make any comment in regards to this appeal?
I have nothing further to add, I just want to clarify that, I believe there are eight applicants, total, four cannot be here tonight.
That's okay. You're here, you have the right to speak, they don't. They waive that right, but not attending.
Okay.
He can identify himself.
All right, your name is--
Sorry, I'm Krista Paul, I'm at nine oh six, actually.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
I think we can close that public session.
All right, I'll make a motion to close. Public comment?
Can you get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Public comment, closed.
All right, so at this point, I unfortunately have to say that the ordinance was not violated in any way. There is no height issue regarding the structure. I unfortunately cannot rule in favor of the appeal, so I make a motion to deny the appeal.
I second.
I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni, and a second by Brittany Ashman. Daniel Harris, Taribo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Tim Slick. And Christopher Avaloni.
But you missed one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wendy.
Yes.
Wendy Glassman, yes. And finally, Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
So it's five to zero vote, correct?
Yes, that's--
No appeal. Okay, for the reason that Mr. Avaloni stated, that there's been no violation of the ordinance. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make the motion to take a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. All right.
Good, yes.
Okay, let's get back into this.
Oh, yeah.
All right, it's 7:55 PM and I will take role, Daniel Harris.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Jill Potter is joining us, rejoining us.
Yes.
Thank you. Wendy Glassman.
Here.
And Christopher Avaloni.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next application, 1212 Sunset Avenue. Mr. Rimal? Please come up.
Please. Peppermint.
Mr. Chairman, I look at these notices as well and they are in public form and we have jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes.
And I have Sal Corvino, planner, architect and planner.
Okay. Is he the architect or is he the planner?
Oh, no.
Oh, you're both.
I got it wrong.
Oh, lucky you.
Not, not reciprocity, just to be clear.
Twice.
Get it as a right, as an architect.
And you think that's not in the plan?
No, just, just the new--
Okay, I'm going to put it on the screen.
I don't think we need to use it, I just, hard to read the small sheet, so I may need it for that.
So, you might want to present yourself, Chris.
Yes, I--
Officer, I need you to be your witness as well. So you have a crisscross on the testimony from the booking, so then I want both of you to swear your name. So I'll put the testimony about the business matter to the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and you two, you state your respective names, spell it, and we know that the gentleman in the jacket here on this side is the owner. Tell us what you--
Yes, okay, my name is Arun. My name is Arun, A-R-U-N, Rimal, R-I-M-A-L. And what, what else do you want?
No, you're the--
I'm the applicant, right.
Sir, your name?
Salvatore Corvino, architect and planner.
C-O-R-V-I-N-O.
Correct. 111 Brookfield Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey.
Can we hear your credentials, Mr. Corvino?
Yes, I've been an architect since 89 and a planner-- Yes, I've been an architect since 89 and a planner since...
You're a licensed architect and a licensed planner here in New Jersey?
Received my planner's license through reciprocity. Testified at hearings, at least two or 300 hearings in New Jersey and...
So you're licensed in both areas?
Right, and I'm also licensed in New York.
Can I ask, do you have your PP and your AICP?
I'm sorry?
Do you have your PP and your AICP?
Just, just PP.
He said it through reciprocity.
Through reciprocity.
He's allowed to say the...
Oh, so it's a P E?
I don't think they allow that anymore, but back then they allowed it.
Okay. So just PP, not AICP, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Corvino, we accept your credentials.
It's your case, sir.
Okay, so should I start?
Please, Mr. Ramal.
This is a new thing to me, so...
May as well.
So we bought our house, 1212 Sunset Avenue, about six months ago. And the house has its own set of constraints and, but when, when we were buying the house, I, we were already thinking of adding some more space because the house is very small.
Are you living there now, Mr. Ramal?
I mean, we are halfway, we still live in Harrison and, you know, we haven't moved in yet fully.
Okay.
Yeah, because obviously the construction, I'm expecting the construction to start soon. And then upon investigation, we found out that we have issued a setback because the lot is very, very narrow, it's not a 50-foot lot, it's a 25-foot lot, a long lot as well. And Sal will go through the non-conformity and all those things a little later. And because of that, since we want to add in the rear of the building, as well as I had indicated adding a balcony in the front of the building and the second floor, those were the two variances that we had applied for. And we received the review from the zoning board office last Wednesday, I think, and which indicated there are certain things that were indicated to us that would be problematic. We have taken another look at it, we have also sent in a new set of plans with some revisions as well.
You sent in a new set of plans?
I mean, I just, I just did, which...
When?
Tonight.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
We know we were supposed to, we just had that.
He brought them in with him and I can't send them to me, so that I can put them up if you accept them.
No, I did not accept them.
We have handouts too.
We can, we can give you the handouts.
Let me speak to the, the original application.
You'll start with the original and we're just, you know, we have something.
While we have it, we'll break it, please raise your hand here. Did I, yeah, I missed it, so I swear, testimony, best given, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I did.
You state your name for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, professional planner, AICP, COB, sorry, Clark, Kate, Vince, board plan.
Sorry for the interruption, but I want to hear this.
And then I am familiar with Mr. Ramal's application from when he had originally come into the zoning office in August, September, when he was building and giving his, in the scope of what he was allowed to do and what that he would need variance.
Okay, I would like to...
Wait, 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 let's back up some. I, I just heard there are new plans submitted.
Yes.
So, I, I, what?
I don't care about...
She hasn't seen it.
Oh, no, you, you mean you don't?
Yeah.
You do.
I do.
Yes, yes, of course.
Yeah, she hasn't seen it.
All right, let's, let's, let me ask you this. Before we get into this, I know where Christopher's going, known him for many, many years. We do not accept new plans in either hearing. Do these plans in any way affect the variances that you've requested?
It actually eliminates three variances.
Okay, so this is going to get carried.
I'm sorry?
We're going to carry this application.
Well, they weren't, you know, they were only brought as a presentation of what could be done.
Mr. Corvino, we do not accept plans the night of the meeting.
No, we understand that.
We do not accept changes the night of the meeting.
We're going to stick with the original plan.
So you want to withdraw your amended plans?
We will...
You want to go through more variances than you need?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're going to apply, if we're going to try to get those variances, it can be turned down if you don't want.
Why would you risk that?
You must understand, the more variances, the more likely...
Yeah, and I agree.
You can't present the case as originally submitted, but if you have revised plans and the board, now, now that you've tipped your hand, the board is going, the board is going to want less variances.
Yeah, no, we understand that.
If you can develop the property with less variances, that means you're coming here asking for less relief, and that's what zoning boards want to hear.
Desecration for the ones he did.
Yeah, and without knowing the extended plans, and they're not going to look at them tonight, 27 years, they haven't, that's how long I've been here.
And I feel like I'm old too.
Oh, I am, I am. The prudent thing to do is just carry it a couple of weeks and come back.
Yeah.
That's the prudent thing to do.
And I highly recommend it.
Yeah, because you're paying, it's a double X, you got yourself in a, in a corner.
You do not want us to make a decision based on more variances.
Yeah, yeah, especially when we know that you can submit plans that would reduce the quantity of variances. And that's what you should do.
Right.
And that's what we're here about.
Okay.
I'm not your attorney, but I'm, in a sense, I'm an attorney for every citizen in the city and the board.
It was, it was prepared in response to the letter, you know, it was just a few, just started late last week.
You wouldn't have to renotice. I would ask the chairman to carry it to a meeting without further notice. Get you in, get your plan submitted and get a revised report from the planner and if you can have less variances than more, I'll do you a favor.
And I'm doing you a favor.
I agree.
And I'm sorry you had to come, but it's better this way than to go the other way, possibly get turned down and spend a whole lot of money starting over.
Okay.
No problem.
So, based on the new submissions that we have not seen or will not see for quite some time now, because our board planner is going to have to revise her report. So I believe we have a meeting at the end of January?
Yes, January 25th. What date I would suggest carrying to?
Okay, so based on the new evidence that we have not seen, I will make a motion to carry Mr. Ramal's application to January 25th, 2022, without further notice.
And I have one caveat. Under the ML Municipal Land Use Law, we only have so much time within which to decide a case unless we get the consent of the applicant to extend the time. Do you in fact consent to any extension of time that we may need in order to get you to January 25th, 22?
There's no problem.
There's no problem.
Go ahead. Glad you said that, because then we would have to... All right, yeah.
We're good?
You're going to get it approved.
And I'll second the motion to carry it without further notice.
And Donna, did that give you an extra time?
Yes, as long as they aren't going to give you an change this position.
And so the, the plan that you have sent to me are your final terms that I can forward to the board?
The plan that I have, I sent to you has five sheets, that will replace the old five sheets. The other three can stay.
So why don't we do this tomorrow morning, send me a complete set of revised plans that I can forward to the board? All right, so I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Jill Potter. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yeah.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
And Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
Thank you. Application carries to January 25th, 2022, without further notice.
I have posted, in the panel's report, it was referenced, you've been agreeing?
Yes.
I need to see that you've been agreeing that, if you have a copy. Send it, send it to our editor, send it to him after he wrote the...
I'll leave a hard copy and send it to the...
So I will now make a motion during the meeting?
I'll second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Brittany Ashman, all in favor?
Aye. Happy holidays, everybody, happy new year.
Thank you, thank you so much.